South and main entrance exits are available. For occupants at the VIP gallery, the main entrance and north and south VIP exits are available. For occupants at the second floor gallery, there are exits available at both sides. For occupants at the third floor gallery, there are available exits at the east and west sides. In case of emergency, this is the plenary hall exit plan. For guests situated at the rostrum, the nearest exits are at the north and south rostrum. For occupants at the first floor and front rows of the VIP gallery, the north, south, and main entrance exits are available. For occupants at the VIP gallery, the main entrance and north and south VIP exits are available. For occupants at the second floor gallery, there are exits available at both sides. For occupants at the third floor gallery, there are available exits at the east and west sides.
Session resumed? Session suspended.
...
mga pinamahal kong kasamahan sa malaking kapulungan, mahal kong kababayan, nag-araw po sa inyong lahat. I stand before you today without most humility and with deep gratitude for the trust and confidence you have accorded me. That trust has been the source of my strength in every day of service. When I assumed this responsibility, I made a solemn commitment that the House of Representatives would be the people's house. Isang kongresong bukas, apat, at tunay na naglilingkod. Yet leadership also demands that we confront the trials of the president. In his recent State of the Nation address, our president reminded us that accountability must prevail and that no one is above scrutiny. I fully and unequivocally embrace that call. The issues surrounding certain infrastructure projects have raised questions that weigh not only upon me but upon this institution we all serve. Ang ating mga kababayan ay naghahangad ng linaw at higit sa lahat ng tiwala. Tungkulin natin ito'y maibalik. The longer I stay, the heavier that burden grows on me, on this House, and on the president I've always sought to support. And so, after deep reflection and prayer, I have made a decision today with a full heart and a clear conscience. I tender my resignation as Speaker of the House of Representatives. I do this so that the independent commission on infrastructure may pursue its mandate freely and fully without doubt, without interference, without undue influence. Walang pipigin, walang makiki-alam. Let the truth emerge and let justice be done. My colleagues, carry forward the work of this institution with unity and resolve. My colleagues, carry forward the work of this institution with unity and resolve. For the Filipino people, never lose faith in democracy for it remains capable of self-correction and renewal. Mga pinamahal kong kababayan, I leave this chamber as I first entered it. A humble servant, ready to serve wherever duty make call. I step down not in surrender but in service for sometimes the greatest act of leadership is the grace to let it go so that this institution may endure stronger than ever before. Ang daming salamat ayong atanan. Mabuhay ang kongreso ng taong bayan, mabuhay ang Pilipinas.
Session suspended.
Session resume, Majority Leader.
Madam Presiding Officer, I move to open the table for nominations for the position of Speaker of the House of Representatives.
There is a motion to open the table for nominations for the position of Speaker of the House of Representatives. There being no objection, the motion is approved. The nominations are now in order. Majority Leader.
Madam Presiding Officer, I move to recognize the Honorable Ralph Wendell P. Tulfo from the 2nd District of Quezon City to make his nomination.
The Honorable Ralph Wendell P. Tulfo from the 2nd District of Quezon City is recognized.
Madam Speaker, I move to nominate Honorable Faustino Bodge D III for the position of the Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Presiding Officer, I move to recognize the Honorable Antonio Tony Petti Albano from the 1st District of Isabela to second the nomination.
Madam Speaker, this humble representation seconds the nomination for the position of Speaker of the House of Representatives, Congressman Faustino Bodge Gomez D III.
Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Presiding Officer, there being no other nomination for the position of Speaker of the House of Representatives, I move to close the table for nominations.
There is a motion to close the table for nomination for the position of Speaker of the House of Representatives. There being no objection, the motion is carried. Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Presiding Officer, I move to proceed to the election of the Speaker of the House of Representatives.
There is a motion to proceed to the election of the Speaker of the House of Representatives. There being no objection, the motion is approved. The election of the Speaker of the House of Representatives is now in order. The Secretary General will now call the roll of members. May we request members upon being called to state the name of the candidate they are voting for as Speaker of the House of Representatives without explanation.
Roll of Members 20th Congress, First Regular Session, 25 to 28, as of August 11, 2025. Avalos. Abante. Asidre. Akop. This representation vote for DS Faustino D as Speaker of the House. Acosta.
For the 3rd District of Palauan, Mr. Speaker, we vote for Congressman Faustino D.
Adyong.
D for Speaker.
Adbingkula.
I vote for Faustino Bodge D III as Speaker of the House. Thank you.
Agarao.
Speaker, Faustino Bodge D.
Agya.
From the Lone District of Kalinga, I vote for Faustino Bodge D for the 20th Congress as speakership.
Alano.
From the Lone District of Basilan, I vote for Congressman Faustino Bodge D.
Alba.
From the 1st District of Bukidnon, I vote for Representative Faustino Bodge D for Speaker of the House.
Albano.
From the 1st District of Province of Isabela, I vote for Faustino Bodge D III.
Almario Chino Miguel.
From the 2nd District of the Province of Davariyantals, this representation votes for Honorable Faustino Bodge D III, Mr. Speaker.
Almario Dennis.
From Ratsi City, 2nd Congressional District. My vote is for Congressman Faustino D III. Thank you very much.
Almonte.
For the 1st District of Missamis Occidental, I'll vote for Faustino D III.
Albareso Se.
I vote goes to Faustino Bodge D.
Albaris Mercedes.
Madam Speaker, I vote for Faustino D III.
Amante.
From the 3rd District of Laguna, my vote is for Faustino Bodge D for Speaker of the House.
Matong. D. Ang. Wala. Angara.
This representation from the Lone District of Aurora, votes for Faustino Bodge D III for Speaker.
Angelis.
From the 2nd District of Terlap, I vote for Congressman Faustino D III.
Aquino.
For the Lone District of Butuan City, I vote for Faustino Bodge D.
Aquino Magsay Say.
For United Senior Citizens Party List, I vote for Congressman Faustino D.
Arbison Munir.
From the 2nd District of Sulu, I vote for Faustino D.
Arbison Munir Jr.
Faustino Bodge D III.
Arenas. Arrogancia.
From the 3rd District of Quezon Province, I vote for Faustino D for Speaker of the House of Representatives. Thank you.
Asistyo.
From 3rd District of Caloocan City, my vote is for Representative Faustino Bodge.
Atide.
Madam Chair from Quezon City District 1, my vote goes for Honorable Faustino Bodge D for Speaker of the House.
Commentado. Ayon. Ayon.
Madam Chairman, from Surty Party List, being a member of the minority, I choose to abstain. Thank you.
Bagaw.
From Binagat Islands, Madam Speaker, I am a member of the minority. I vote to abstain.
Balindong.
Faustino D.
Banyas Nograles.
From Lone District of General Santo City, I am voting for Congressman Faustino Bodge D.
Bancoro.
From the 1st District of Zamboanga Cibugay, I vote for Honorable Faustino Bodge D as Speaker.
Barba.
Si Buto City, Mekadua Distrito, di provincia di Loko Snorte, ket para keni diputado, Faustino Bodge D III.
Barbers.
In behalf of the people of Surigao del Norte, District 2, my vote is for Speaker Faustino D.
Baronda.
From the Lone District of Iluilo City, my vote is for Faustino Bodge D III.
Porchaga.
I abstain.
Vasco. Vasco.
This representation from the 1st District of Agusan del Sur, I cast my vote to Representative Faustino Bodge D III.
Bautista Clode. Wala. Bautista Joan Munich.
On behalf of Trabaho Party List, I vote for the Honorable Faustino D III as Speaker of the House.
Bautista Lim. Beltran. Wala, no? Benitez Elpredo.
From the Lone District of Macalon City, I gladly vote for Faustino D.
Benitez Javier Miguel.
Madam Speaker, from the 3rd District of Negros Occidental, this representation votes for Congressman Faustino Bodge D III.
Bernos Ching.
From the Solid North Party List, my vote is for Congressman Bodge D.
Bernos JB.
From the Lone District of Abra, I vote for Bodge D.
Biron.
From the 4th District of the Province of Iluilo, I vote for Faustino Bodge D III.
Buqobo.
From the 2nd District of Taguig, I vote for Faustino Bodge D III.
Bolilia.
From the 4th District, Province of Patangas, my vote is for Faustino D as House Speaker.
Pundo.
From the 4th District of Pamanga, I am voting for Faustino Bodge D as Speaker.
Breones.
From Agapartilis, I vote for Faustino Bodge D III as Speaker of the House.
Bulut Begdan.
For the Lone District of Apayo, I vote for Congressman Faustino D III.
Cagas.
From the Lone District of Dabodil Sur, I vote for Faustino Bodge D III.
Calderon.
I vote Faustino D for Speaker.
Galixto.
From Lone District of Pasay, I vote for Faustino D III as Speaker.
Kawagnan Dan. Congressman D. Carey.
From the 5th District of Leyte, my vote is for Faustino Bodge D III.
Castro.
From the 2nd District of Capys, this representation votes for the Honorable Representative Faustino D as Speaker of the House.
Kaiton.
From the Lone District of Nueva Biscaya, I vote for Congressman Faustino Bodge D III as a Speaker of the House.
Celeste. Bodge D. Sendanya.
Ang akbayan po bilang bahagi ng minorya ay nag-abstain.
Tenisa.
Honorable D III.
Chan.
From the Lone District of Lapo-Lapo City, my vote is for Faustino Bodge D III as House Speaker.
Ju.
From the 3rd District of the City of Manila, my vote is for Congressman Faustino D as Speaker of the House.
Juatay.
From Zamboanga City 1st District, I vote for Congressman Faustino Bodge D III as Speaker of the House.
Chungalao.
From the Province of Bifao, I vote for Congressman Faustino D III. Thank you.
Ko Elisaldi. Correne Luis.
Abstain.
Ko Pilar.
From the 6th District of Quezon City, my vote is for Kong Faustino D as Speaker of the House.
Ko Juan Kohaimi Eduardo Marc.
Bodge D for Speaker.
Ko Juan Komark. Coriantes.
The 3rd District of Batangas votes Speaker Bodge D as House Speaker.
Corbera.
From the Lone District of
Madam Speaker, this representation from the 3rd District of Bataan votes for Representative Bodhi D III as Speaker.
Garriola. Garin.
Bodhi D.
Gachilian.
Madam Chair, from 1st District of Valenzuela, I vote for Congressman Faustino D III for Speaker.
Gato.
From the 1st District of Batanes, I vote for Congressman Faustino Bodhi D III.
Gilpa.
1 Coop votes for Honorable Faustino Bodhi D III for Speaker.
Ko. Go.
From the 2nd District of Isabela, my vote is for Faustino Bodhi D III.
Gomez. Gonzalez Alexandria.
For the 1st District of Mandaluyang, this representation votes for Faustino Bodhi D III.
Gonzalez Eliza Miquela.
From the 3rd District of Pampanga, we vote for Congressman Faustino Bodhi D III as Speaker of the House.
Gonzalez Christopher Shin.
Madam Speaker, this representation belongs to the minority block. I respectfully abstain.
Gonzalez Roy.
From the 1st District of Cidia Santa Rosa, I vote for Faustino Bodhi D III.
Goreseta.
From the 2nd District, Province of Viloilo, my vote is for Congressman Faustino D as Speaker of the House.
Kiko.
From the 5th District of Pangasinan, I vote for Bodhi D III.
Ginto.
From the 1st District of Capis, my vote goes to Faustino Bodhi D III as Speaker.
Gulyas.
Vote for Faustino D III.
Gutierrez. Hernandez Charizan. Hernandez Dennis. Hernandez Ferdinand.
From 43rd District of Rizal, I vote for Faustino D.
Hernandez Ferdinand.
From the 2nd District of South Cotabato, I cast my vote for Congressman Faustino Bodhi D III as Speaker of the House.
Hernandez Ramil.
From the 2nd District of Laguna, I vote for Faustino D.
Ofer Hasim.
From the 2nd District of Zambuanga Cibugay, I vote for Honorable Faustino D.
Orribata. Ismula.
From Akbayan Partilis and a member of the minority, I vote to abstain. Thank you.
Euy.
From the 1st District of Negroes Oriental, my vote for Speaker goes to Faustino D III. Thank you.
Javier.
From the 2nd District of Laita, I vote for Congressman Faustino D for Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Ko Antonio. Ko Elisa.
This representation votes for Congressman Bodhi D.
Ko Wilton. Konghul.
Speaker Bodhi D.
Ko.
Madam Chair, from Abang Lingkot Partilis, for Speaker of the House of Representatives, Congressman Bodhi D III.
Labad Labad.
On behalf of the 2nd District of Zambuanga del Norte, I vote for Honorable Faustino Bodhi D as Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Lacson. Lagbas.
From Primero, Miss Amos Oriental, I vote for Faustino D III.
Lagdameyo Jose Manuel.
Madam Speaker, from Davao del Norte, District 2, my vote goes to Faustino Bodhi D III for Speaker of the House.
Lagdameyo Monique Jasmin Maria.
From the 1st District of Makati City, we vote for Speaker Bodhi D III.
Lagman.
From the 1st District of Albay, I choose to remain with the minority. I abstain.
Lagon Dapne.
My vote is for Congressman Faustino D.
Lagon Soni.
Mayonghapon, on behalf of Aku Bisa Partilis, our vote is for the Honorable Faustino Bodhi D.
Lara.
Agayantar District, I vote for Speaker Bodhi D.
Nasatin.
Maya Pagapanapon, Kim Primero, Distrito Nanning Kapampangan, will be voting for Faustino Bodhi D III para Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Dedesma. Legasyon.
Faustino Bodhi D III for Speaker.
Legarda.
Madam Speaker, from the 1st District of Antike, this representation votes for Faustino Bodhi D III as Speaker.
Legaspi.
Congroper Sparkilis, we vote for the Honorable Faustino Bodhi D as Speaker for the House of Representatives.
Ebistef.
For the 1st District of Batangas, I vote for Faustino Bodhi D III for Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Ribanan.
Madam Speaker, being with the minority, I abstain.
Lopez.
In behalf of Alona Partilis, I vote for Representative Faustino Bodhi D III.
Gloria. Faustino D III. Loyola.
Madam Speaker, from the 5th District of Cavite, I vote for Congressman Faustino Bodhi D III as Speaker of the House.
Luistro.
For Batangas 2nd District, my vote is for Faustino Bodhi D III.
Lumayag.
From the 1st District of South Cotabato, I vote for Faustino Bodhi D III as Speaker of the House.
Makapagal Arroyo. Makasait.
Padoche SIS Sis Pensionado Partilis, i por que desambuangayo tabo tayo kun Faustino D Junior. I mean Faustino D III, sir. Thank you.
Maceda.
From the 4th District of Manila, I vote for Faustino Bodhi D III.
Madrona.
Bodhi D.
Malapitan.
Kalaukan 1st District is for Faustino Bodhi D.
Mangunda Dato.
Salam walikum, warahmatullahi ta'ala, barakatuh.
From the 1st District of Magintanao del Sur, my vote goes for Faustino Bodhi D III.
Manikis.
From the 2nd District of Zambales, Congressman Bodhi D. Thank you.
Maranyon.
Faustino D.
Marco Leta.
Madam Speaker, my vote could have gone to either Kong Tobichanco, Kong Ducfrasco, or Kong Kongmyaw Kiko Barsaga, but since they are not on the list, because they are not, I think they are not ready to run yet, maybe at least not for now, I think the House needs a major institutional change, institutional reforms, not just cosmetic changes.
We are not honoring anyone right now. We proceed with the election.
Point of order, Madam Speaker.
Section, please proceed.
Madams.
Marcos.
Madam Speaker, the 1st District of Ilocos Norte chooses to vote for Faustino Bodhi D III as Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Marquez.
Madam Speaker, from the 1st District of the Province of Aklan, I vote Honorable Faustino Bodhi D III for Speaker of the House.
Mastura.
This representation votes for Faustino Bodhi D.
Matibag. Matugas.
From the 1st District of Chergao, Sorigao del Norte, I vote for Congressman Faustino D III as Speaker of the House.
Mendoza. Mercado.
From the 1st District of Southern Laita, I vote for Congressman Faustino Bodhi D III.
Mercado Rebilia.
A humble representation from the 2nd District of Cavite votes for Congressman Faustino Bodhi D III.
Mira Flores.
From the 2nd District of Aklan, I vote for the Honorable Faustino Bodhi D III.
MoMo.
Sorigao del Sur First votes for Bodhi D as Speaker of the House of Representatives in the 28th Congress.
Montes.
The 4K Partilis being part of the minority abstains.
Naba. Nasal.
On behalf of Bagong Emelasyon Partilis and as a member of the minority, I choose to abstain.
Nisai.
As part of the minority, I abstain.
Nolasco. Huaminal Henry.
On behalf of Asensio Pinoy Partilis, I vote for Congressman Faustino Bodhi D III.
Huaminal Sancho Fernando. Huaminal Sancho Fernando. Odukado.
Madam Speaker, this representation votes for Representative Bodhi D III.
Olivares.
Madam Speaker, this representation from the city of Paranyake, Paranyake votes for Honorable Congressman Faustino Bodhi D III as Speaker of the House.
Hong Chuwan.
Madam Presiding Officer, in behalf of the people of the 2nd District of Northern Samar, I cast my vote for my fellow party mate, Representative Faustino Bodhi D III for as House Speaker. Thank you.
Ordanyes.
From Senior Citis S Sparkilis, I vote for Congressman Faustino Bodhi D III.
Orretta.
From the 1st District of Malabon, this representation votes for Faustino Bodhi D III for Speaker of the House.
Ortega.
Tinagan di 1st District, tilaunyon, dibotos me, kath di.
Uanyo Dison.
From the 1st District of Mandawi City, my vote is for Congressman Faustino Bodhi D III as House Speaker.
Pajernos.
This representation votes for Faustino Bodhi D III for Speaker of the House.
Panaligan.
Faustino D III.
Pancho.
Honorable Faustino Bodhi D III.
Panotes.
This representation votes for Congressman Bodhi D.
Pascual.
From the 1st District of Nevai Cihah, my vote is for Faustino D III.
Perez.
Madam Chair, in behalf of the 2nd District of Zambuanga City, I vote Congressman Faustino Bodhi D III for the Speaker of the House.
Pimentel.
Madam Speaker, on behalf of the 2nd District of Sorigao del Sur, I vote for Congressman Bodhi D as Speaker.
Plaza.
Mister Chair, Madam Chair, from the 2nd District of the Province of Agusan del Sur, I vote for Faustino Bodhi D for the Speakership.
Plato.
Madam Chair, 6th District of Bulakan, Bodhi D.
Ko.
Pilang representative ng FPJ Panday Baynean Partilis, my vote is for Faustino Bodhi D III.
Premisia Sagabas.
On behalf of the people of the 6th District of Pangasinan, I vote for Honorable Faustino Bodhi D III as Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Umarin.
Faustino D.
Uno. Bodhi D. Kimbo. Rama.
Faustino Bodhi D.
Rehenja. Recto.
This representation from the 6th District of Batangas votes for Faustino Bodhi D III for Speaker.
Rehenja. Remulia.
From the 7th District of Cavite, our vote is for Speaker Faustino D III.
Rebilia Bryan.
On behalf of Agimat Partilis, my vote goes to Faustino Bodhi D.
Rebilia Ramon Holo.
From the 1st District of the Province of Cavite, my vote is for Faustino Bodhi D III.
Ridon.
We vote abstain.
Rivera.
Bodhi D for Speaker.
Robes.
I vote Faustino Bodhi D as Speaker.
Rodriguez Eloyo.
From the 1st District of Catanduanes, I vote Faustino Bodhi D III for the Speaker of the House.
Rodriguez Maximo.
Abante Mindanao Partilis votes for the Honorable Congressman Faustino Bodhi D III, Speaker of the House.
Rodriguez Rupus.
Madam Speaker, on behalf of the wonderful people of the 2nd District of Caguean de Oro, the city of golden friendship, the gateway to Mindanao, I vote for the next Speaker of the House of the People, our incumbent Deputy Speaker, the representative of the 6th District of the Empire Province of Isabela, the honorable Faustino Bodhi D Guzman D III. Thank you.
Roman.
On behalf of the 1st District of Bataan, I vote for Faustino Bodhi D III. From Walis and Oro City, I vote Faustino Bodhi D III.
Swansing Bellem Vanessa.
Faustino D III.
Swansing Micaela Angela.
This representation from the 1st District of Nevai Cihah votes for the Honorable Faustino Bodhi D III as Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Sunthay.
The 4th District of Quezon City shall remain with the minority.
Taliado.
Faustino Bodhi D for Speaker.
Duaries.
Natawo ko yun, Taliado.
Faustino D.
Natawo ko na ba yun, Taliado.
Tan Ayman.
Wala ano.
Tan Joseph.
From 4th District of Isabela, I vote for Faustino Bodhi D as Speaker of the House.
Tan Kit Micah.
Faustino Bodhi D III.
Tan Reynolds Michael.
Abstain.
Tan Samir.
Wala. Wala.
Tan Stephen James.
From the 1st District of Summer, I abstain.
Tan Chai.
In behalf of Kamalayan Partilis, I vote for Honorable Bodhi D as Speaker of the House.
Tan Huatko.
This representation, the 2nd District of Rizal, I vote for Faustino Bodhi D III.
Tariela.
From the 1st District of Occidental Mindoro, I voted for Speaker Faustino Bodhi D as our Speaker.
Teodoro.
From the 1st District of Marikina City, this representation votes for Representative Bodhi D.
Taring. Tevez.
Madam Speaker, in behalf of the GP Partilis, I vote for Faustino D III.
Tiango.
Madam Speaker, in behalf of the people of the 1st District of Navota City, I vote for Faustino Bodhi D III.
King.
5th District of Manila votes for Faustino Bodhi D.
Tino.
Abstain.
Tolentino. Tuwan.
Yukimol Magrean, my vote is for Bodhi D III. Thank you.
Tulpo Jocelyn.
From Axi S Sparkilis, I vote for Honorable Faustino Bodhi D III.
Tulpo Ralph Mendel.
Madam Speaker, the people of the 2nd District of Quezon City vote for our next Speaker, Congressman Bodhi D.
Tupas. Chutor. Wala ano. Ti.
Madam Speaker, as a member of the minority, I abstain.
Umalie.
I vote for Bodhi D.
Ungab. Wala ano. Uy De Carlo.
The Honorable Faustino Bodhi D III as Speaker.
Uy Roberto.
I vote for Kong Faustino D for Speaker.
Valeriano.
Faustino Bodhi D.
Vargas. Vargas...
The 5th district of Quezon City is for Faustino D. III.
Vargas Alfonso...
I vote for Faustino D. III.
Beloso...
Mayong Hapon, on behalf of Malasakit at Bayanihan Partelis, I vote for Representative Faustino D. III as the next Speaker of the House.
Beloso Tuason... Obina... Bergara...
This representation from the 36th district of Nevesia votes for Faustino Boji D. III.
Bilia... No. No. Bilia Puerte Miguel Luis...
Good day. My vote is for Speaker Boji D.
Bilia Puerte Vicenzo Renato Luigi...
Boji D.
Bilia Nueva... No. No. Bilia Rica...
I vote for Representative Boji D.
Biolago...
Honorable Faustino Boji D.
Yamsuan...
The 2nd district of Paranyake through the humble representation votes for Faustino Boji D. III for Speaker of the House.
Yap Kristo Person...
Honorable Faustino Boji D. III.
Yap Edbi...
This representation votes for Speaker Faustino D. III.
Yap Eric...
Boji D.
Yap John Gessel...
Madam Speaker, from the 1st district of the province of Bohol, my vote goes to Representative Faustino Boji D. for Speaker of the House.
Yatko...
On behalf of Nani Partelis, I vote for Faustino Boji D.
Inares...
From the 1st district of Rizal, Boji D.
Yu Giselle Victoria...
I vote for Faustino Boji D. III.
Yu Joseph Kim...
For the 1st district of Zambanga del Sur, I vote for Faustino D. III for Speaker.
Yulo...
This representation votes for Faustino D.
Zamora Maria Carmen... Zamora Isabel Maria... Subiri...
On behalf of the 3rd district of Bukidnon and as a member of the minority, I abstain. And as the last voting member here, I congratulate Speaker Faustino Boji D.
Second call of members for the election of the Speaker of the House: Abante, Cumentado, Bautista Clode, Bautista Lim, Beltran, Coelisalde, Cohuanco, Ayme Eduardo Marc, Duterte Vincent, Duterte Paulo, Espares, Presnedi, Garcia Dante, Cardiola, Gomez, Co Antonio, Co Wilton, Laxson, Ledesma, Macapagal Arroyo, Naba, Nolasco, O Minal Sancho Fernando, Rehencia, Romualdes Andrew.
From the non-despect of illegal treaty, my vote is for Congressman D. as the Speaker of the House.
Romualdes Andrew, Romualdes Yedamari, Tan Amian, Tan Samir, Tanchay.
This is Tanchay Bumoto.
Tanchay. Tanchay Bumoto. Bumoto si Tanchay. Thank you. Thank you Congressman Tanchay.
I... I vote for Honorable Tinoboji D. as Speaker of the House. Sorry.
Yes ma'am. Tereng, Tupas, Chutor, Umani, Ungab, Bilia, Bilia Nueva, Bielago.
With 28 members abstaining from the vote, zero member registering a negative vote, and four members who did not vote, the results of the voting show that the Honorable Faustino Boji G. D. III garnered 253 votes. With 253 votes, the Chair declares the Honorable Faustino Boji G. D. III from the sixth district of Isabela as the duly elected Speaker of the House of Representatives, Majority Leader.
Madam Presiding Officer, I move to suspend for a few minutes.
Session suspended.
Session is resumed. The Speaker-elect, the Honorable Faustino Boji G. D. III and his family are invited to the rostrum for the oath-taking. The Honorable Javier Miguel Lopez Benitez of the third district of Negroes Occidental will administer the oath of office to the Speaker-elect. The Honorable Benitez is invited to the rostrum to administer the oath of office of the Speaker. May we request all the members of the House to rise.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I...
I, Faustino Boji D. III.
Of the?
Of the sixth district of Isabela.
Having been elected as?
Having been elected as Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Hereby solemnly swear?
Hereby solemnly swear.
That I will well and faithfully discharge to the best of my ability.
I will well and faithfully discharge to the best of my ability.
The duties of my present position and of all others I may hereafter hold under the Republic of the Philippines.
The duties of my present position, all of others, may hereafter hold under the Republic of the Philippines.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the Philippines.
I will defend, support, Constitution of the Philippines.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will obey the laws, legal orders, and decrees promulgated by the duly constituted authorities of the Republic of the Philippines.
And that I will obey the laws, legal orders, and decrees promulgated by the duly constituted authorities of the Republic of the Philippines.
And that I impose this obligation upon myself voluntarily, without mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I impose this obligation upon myself voluntarily, without mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Speaker of the House of Representatives, Faustino Boji D. III, will now address the body.
To the honorable members of this August chamber, the 20th Congress, mga kababayan, magandang hapon sa ating buong lahat. Ako po'y lubos na nagpapasalamat sa mga kasama kong mamabatas in the House of Representatives, sa paghalal ninyo sa akin bilang Speaker. Hindi ko po ito inaasahan. Matapos ang ilang dekadang paninilbihan bilang lingkodbayan, mula pa kabataan barangay, hanggang gubernador ng Isabela, inakala ko na ang susunod na yugto ng aking buhay ay para sa aking pamilya. Ngunit, ibang daan ang inilatag ng ating Panginoon. Dinala niya po ako muli dito sa Kongreso upang mashigit pangpalawakin ang aking paglilingkod. Aminado po ako, meron po akong pangamba sa aking dibdib habang iniisip ko, ang hamon na katungkulang inaatang sa aking balikat. Patid ko po na marami sa ating mga kababayan ang nasasaktan at nagagalit na dahil sa mga kasalukuyang kaganapan. Naiintindihan ko po kayo. Bilang anak ng lalawigan ng Isabela, alam na alam ko po, ang mga pagsubok na dala ng matinding bagyo, ang pagkasira ng mga bahay at buhay tuwing tumataas ang tubig baha. Sa ngalan nila, hinatanggap ko ng buong kababang loob ang hamon ng pagiging Speaker of the House. Ako nao ang unang magsasabi sa ating mga kababayan. Meron po kaming pagpukulang. Kami po ay nagpapakumbaba sa inyo. Nakikiusap po kami na sana bigyan niyo kami ng pagkakataong ituwid ang mga maling kalakaran at linisin ang aming hanay. Nakikiusap po kami na bigyan niyo pa kami ng tiyangsang makuha muli ang inyopong tiwala. Ako po ay ka isa ng ating mahal na Pangulo sa kanyang layunin na linisin ang pamahalan upang tayo ay bumangon muli.
Under my leadership, this house will change. I will not defend the guilty and I will not shield the corrupt. Gaya ng paninindigan ng ating Pangulo, no rock, no ally, no office will be spared from accountability. We must threaten the Oversight Committee and fully cooperate with the Independent Commission of Infrastructure. Our duty is not to protect each other, our duty is to protect the Filipino people.
Alam kong maaring maging puno ito ng panganib dahil sa mga maaring matapakan. Sinusugal ko ang aking pangalang na mga tagal ko pong pinagpaguran. Yayakapi ko ang sakripisyon ito ng maibsan ang mas mabigat na sakripisyon kinakaharap ng ating mga kababayan. Malinaw sa akin na higit matimbang ang aking pananagotang itaguyod ng ating saligang batas at unahin ang kapakanan ng mas nakakarami. Hindi ko hayaan ang sino man na membro dito sa 20th Congress na gamitin ang Kongreso para sa kanyang personal na interes. Panahon na, nangitoon natin ang ating piningin sa mga pangailangan ng ating mga kababayan. Sila ang rason kung bakit tayo naririto. Huwag sana po nating kalimutan 'yan. Sila ang unahin natin bago ang pansariling kapakanan. Kung meron pong dapat na managot sa mga umuugong na mga paratang na ito, titiyakin natin na magiging patas ang mga pagdinig. At kung meron mang mga pangalang nabanggit sa mga pagdinig na ito, may mga tamang forum para sila ay makapagpaliwanag. Tayo po ay magiging transparent at accountable sa ating mga gawain. Kung kinakailangan, makipagugnayan sa mga naglalabas ng saloobin, ako po mismo ang harap para makipag-usap. Makikinig po kami sa daing ng ating mga mamamayan, makikinig po kami sa inyong mga boses. Ito lang ang paraan para lumabas ang pawang katotohanan at dito lang masisimulan matanggal ang agam-agam ng ating mga kababayan. Sa mga kasamahan ko sa Kongreso, magtatanggampay lamang po tayo kung tayo magkakaisa upang makamit ang hangaring ito. Buo po ang aking paniniwala na mas nakakarami sa ating mga kasamahan ang nangangharap at handang magtrabaho ng tapat para mapabuti ang ating bansa. Hindi ko po magagawa itong na nag-iisa. Kailangan ko po kayo. Kailangan po natin ang bawat isa. Kaya kukunin ko itong pagkakataon na ito naipabot sa aking ang ating pong pasasalamat sa dating Speaker, sa kanyang bukas palad na pakikipagtulungan para maisa katuparan ang isang maayos na transisyon at natatanging hangarin na ito. Sa tulong ninyo, sisiguro din natin na ang bawat senti mo ng paglalaanan ng budget sa bawat departamento ay tutugma sa pangailangan ng mamamayang Pilipino. Pagtutulungan nating makapagpasa ng isang maayos at malinis na budget na mailalaan lamang tama sa mga programa para sa ating taong bayan. May mga bang nang ginawa upang gawing mas bukas ang proseso ng pagpasa ng budget at mas paigtingin pa natin ito. Ako po ay handang makinig. Sa iba't iba nating tinig upang higit ng makaunawa. Nakahanda po, nakahanda po ang aking bisig na makipagtulungan kanino man alang-alang sa ating bansa. Mula noon hanggang ngayon, ako po ay walang pinipiling kulay. Lahat ay mahalaga. Lahat ay may maaring maiambag upang magampanan ang ating mandato bilang kinatawan ng ating pong mga mamamayan. Sa ating pong mga kababayan, hinihiling ko po na magpatuloy tayong magmatsag at magbanday. Tanging kayo lamang po ang makakapsabi at makakapagpa-sya kung dapat bang ibigay ninyo muli ang tiwala sa amin. Kayo ang magiging bahagi ng reforma para masiguro natin sa darating na mga araw ang kapakanan ng taong bayan ang mauuna. Ngayon na po ang oras. Hindi bukas, hindi sa susunod na mga araw. Sama-sama tayong babangon, sama-sama tayong kumilos, sama-sama tayong maglingkod. Hindi magiging madali ang ating tatalakayin. Alam kong magiging mahirap para sa ating lahat, pero gaano man kahirap kung ito naman ang nararapat, kung ito naman ang tama, ito ang kailangan nating gawin at pagtulungan. Sa bagong Kongreso, ipaparamdam po natin ang tunay na malasakit. Ipapamalas natin ang tunay na paglilingkod na nakatutok ng buo para sa pagangat ng buhay ng sambayan ng Pilipino. Walang ibang agenda, walang ibang interes. Kapakanan ng Pilipino ang simula, gitna, at dulo, at wala nang iba. Sa lahat ng ito, hindi tayo hatulan sa ating mga salita kundi sa ating mga gawa. Hindi tayo husgahan sa ating mga pangako kundi sa ating pagtupad. Kaya hinyahakayat ko ang bawat isa na sama-sama nating isulong ang isang bagong Pilipinas na matatag, marangal, at nagkakaisa. Muli, maraming-maraming salamat sa inyong pagtitiwala pagpala inawa tayo ng puong may kapal.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended.
Session suspended.
Oi, check po ng mga buka, papa.
May we request everybody to take their seats.
Session is resumed. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to recognize Senior Deputy Minority Leader Edgar Erise of the Second District of Caloocan.
The Honorable Edgar Erise is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Madam Speaker. Thank you, Majority Leader. On behalf of the minority block of this chamber, I would like to inform your honors that we have re-elected our minority leader in the person of Representative Marcelino Levanan. Thank you.
The manifestation of the Honorable Erise is noted. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to take up the additional reference of business and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on first reading as well as communications and committee reports.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the resolution.
House Resolution Number 287, titled, "Resolution Commending Honorable Perdinent Martin J. Waldes, Speaker of the House of Representatives, for his distinguished and transformative leadership of the House of Representatives and for his enduring contributions to the advancement of legislative excellence, national unity, and public service by Representatives Marcos, Libanan, Suarez, Garin, Balindong, Ortega, Conghun, Singson, Mihan, Puno, Di Faustino, Biron, Mendoza, and Imano."
To the committee on Rules, Majority Leader.
I move to consider House Resolution Number 287 and request the Secretary General read the title of said resolution.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the resolution.
House Resolution Commending Honorable Perdinent Marcos J. Waldes, Speaker of the House of Representatives, for his distinguished and transformative leadership of the House of Representatives and for his enduring contribution to the advancement of legislative excellence, national unity, and public service.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution Number 287.
There's a motion to adopt House Resolution 287. Those who are in favor, say aye. Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it, House Resolution 287 is hereby adopted. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no other business left, I move that we adjourn session till the 22nd of September, Monday, 2:00 PM.
Session is suspended till... A session is adjourned until September 22nd, Monday at 2:00 PM.